United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda, anything to add?
Chair, with you and the board's approval, there are three items. We have a proclamation for Health and Human Services Worker Day. It's in front of you, and we'd like to put that in the Human Services section with your permission.
Okay.
And then, as part of the County Administrator Report, we have a letter that's been given to each of you for men about limiting their services, so we'd like to have that discussion as part of the County Administrator Report. And then finally, there was a correction on, in the contract renewals on page two of the agenda, there's a whole list of contract renewals that the Human Services Committee reviewed and approved, but we did find, it came to our attention that there were five that are listed in your Finance Committee sheet. It's D1 through E3 on your Finance Committee sheet that were not included in the contract rules of the agenda, so we'd like those added. And the contract list is also in your packet, so. All of the three.
All right. Anything else? Tainted motion to approve the agenda?
No, second.
Motion by John, second by Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Minutes November 15th. Anyone?
Something.
I had nothing. I couldn't. I didn't have a thing.
Not much.
Under turns, it says they have not made progress on with the agenda, or progress on with the order. I'll just strike either on or with.
Okay.
Under Human Services, number five and six. I think five and six just lack any details. The one is a $40,000 donation. Doesn't say anything about the amount. The other one at six is a purchase to Central Market for the McBevee program. I just put a little more information, or at least where the purchase will be had, and that they're gift cards for the McBevee program.
Yeah, I saw that too. I thought it was a little vague, but. Page, anything else?
Oh, okay. I mean, I would strike the second sentence under Dave, and then in parentheses, turns. Under the turn, signed their own agreement in relating. That's it.
You get that, Amanda? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
Same thing, that's mission, that's going to be forward with amendments, will result in another call of hearing. And I think I was explaining that it may result in a trigger of the, what I was trying to say, and I didn't know for sure if it will trigger the, come up as a, because the tribe was saying, if you do that, it's a new.
Application, yeah.
So I, at least say it may result, and I didn't say it will, because I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
So just put may result in. Well, that on page three or four, motion second, or motion to pay District Two Commissioner, it's not training, it was the AMC conference.
Yeah, we talked about that afterwards, and I think there was apparently a misunderstanding, because I thought that's what it was too, for the, for the current, but then you explain that they maybe couldn't do that, or?
No, no, all I was indicating, there was a training for them in January that we're sending them the elective email communications on. I had never experienced that, and so I had heard it from others. And so the idea that they had that opportunity is fine, we just wanted to make sure that they're aware of the training in January.
But I think the intent was to pay for their.
The motion was specifically to go to the AMC conference.
That's what I thought so, yeah.
And there was numerous people, and they actually had a special dinner for new elective officials.
Training, special training.
Oh.
It's disappointing that they weren't informed that they could go and should go.
Right.
And I guess that's.
World wide.
They also got an invite from AMC to come.
Yeah.
And it was ordered to them from, Dave was here that day, and both of them talked about it.
So we just changed conference, or training to conference?
AMC Annual Conference.
Annual Conference, okay.
I would say on open forum on page one, it was much more elaborate than that, but the United Nations asked that they deny those, I don't, stop it.
Yeah, I agree with you. Deny the amendment for the CUP.
Yeah. It was quite more elaborate than that. I don't understand my notes there.
Larry, you got an extra coffee cup there?
No, I don't.
An extra one?
What's in, what's in the other one there, the yellow?
Oh, it's, you can have it if you want, but I think you want a drink out of there. I don't know what's been in there, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, rather not.
What?
I guess that's it.
How do these pens?
Figure out what I meant, so I didn't know.
All right, I'm tanning motion to, so the minutes are.
I just have one.
Okay, good for you.
I know it.
What page, and what's the?
One of four, and under County Administrator, motion and second to spit.
Wow, that's what I have, split. I wrote split. I couldn't hear what I wrote split for, it was not spit, it was split.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. Now make, give me a.
I was pretty sure that wasn't right. Sometimes I'm not sure what I'm saying.
Where was it?
I missed that? I've used it pretty good on that part.
Second to split.
All right, I'm tanning motion. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Ben?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both same signs, hearing none, motion carried. Open forum. Nobody? I got a question. Don't let me forget to ask you too, yeah. Reports and correspondence, Richard?
Nothing.
Did your share today?
I did. My share, yep.
Ben?
All right, well, if my email pulls them up. Why don't you have somebody else?
Uh, John?
I know, it's Airport Committee, approve new hangar rates with adding a deposit and late charges to the agreement. Our engineer up there is on the fuel system, parking lot upgrades. We go out to bids in January, start construction in the spring. Got a couple museum building meetings, Benjamin Lawson.
Yep.
Paintings moving right along. I think we'll know how done with the whole building, fill the hole, it should be filled up some more because these two feet deeper than the surrounding ground around it. And Becky is worried that, and I agree, that come the spring, it's pretty sloppy and muddy for, they're using it for parking. I said, that's something the college can still do, bring that up real more agreed. Last meeting, there's a little contention between subcontractors and the general and architect. Communication's bad. Electricians are really upset that things weren't getting communicated, so. Becky realized it probably well worth it to suggest on the onset of this to have a construction manager that really keeps the ball going. And I think Mary and I realize that, and how the public works, they have a pretty good schedule, and they're planning stuff for spring already. Making sure things are there and lined up, and we have the same thing at the jail, that was pretty.
Pretty smooth.
Straightforward, and subcontractors aren't up to speed, they're pushing up. So things are going on. The plan opening and move-in date is February 14th, what Becky's got, and they're gonna, and said they could make, take that. She's got something going on there in January, 14th, 15th, but she said she's supposed to keep going to start bringing some income in for these special projects, and for staff going to, I walked through, it's looking pretty good, my thing. It's a lot of odds and ends, so finish up on it. And I had a special airport meeting that was called for information that has to do with the life link support out there, and not only that, but other ones throughout the whole state. It's on the No Surprise Act. It's industry-wide effect on billing for services, and they only get paid from point of, pick up the point of the drop off. They can't bill for any medical staff work during the flight. You know, they probably got them hooked up to lifesaving machines and all that. They can't bill for that. So there's legislations that are, be going into effect, or hopefully that they can bill for some of that. Right now, they only bill for about 20% of their services. So it could affect our whole rural emergency systems out here. So it's not just local, it's industry-wide, so. I have another meeting with them on that coming up, so. Barry, I missed a few of the Public Works Building.
We called in, we tried to call, listen to you, but you were probably driving.
I was driving. No, I, I kept the video off, so.
Well, we asked if there was anything you had to add when you.
Yeah, I just keep going. Highway, do the five-year road plan, which will be having a hearing Thursday. Other two, three things are on the board, pressure washer purchase, first and crack melter, so forth. Finalization of only 37 contracted buildings, several negotiations throughout time period, attended AMC conference, time of the Transportation Committee and travel relations committees. So it's going to be breakout sessions throughout the couple days. One that was kind of enlightening, I guess, was electric vehicles, little breakout session, and I remember the numbers, right, like Ford's electric pickup, built and delivered about 15,000, they got over 100,000 requested. Quite a request on some of those. Seems like the batteries are improving for longer life, longer mileage, or special mileage on them, so. By 2030, there could be a lot of improvements. The guy that presented is actually from Finland, lived in the United States, and was for electric cars, made in Minnesota, Galles, or over here. It's kind of interesting. I suppose, over there, he's probably exposed to a lot of electric vehicles growing up.
I think it's all, I mean, they're completely self-efficient on their power grid.
Yeah.
Geothermal.
It is interesting, and it's kind of, I invite people up, or buy a different vehicle in the future, probably they'll check in on those, so. But delivery is, right now, they're so far behind on it. And quite additional costs on something. Sheriff's Committee, BB4 has to do with amendment cancellation of service, I don't think that's discussed out here. And I think that's all we're talking.
Ben?
This goes back quite a ways, but on November 15th, Historical Society met, talked about new membership rates and entry fees. They will be about $85 for a membership, annual membership, and $9 to enter the building. They also approved up to a $10,000 in expense to help get moved back into the new facility. And they've got quite a bit of stuff moved into the basement now. They discussed the annual meeting and whether it should be pushed off into January, and it has been. And also discussed the haunted house turnout, they netted about 6,500 from the event. Also, in lieu of the Ice Palace, there will be a few ice sculptures around the new museum this year, and it'll be the public opening for the museum as well. So they're hoping to get people in, but I think they're going to do a big grand opening over the Ice Palace time. Thursday, Laurel Met virtually, we received a financial report, and that was fine, except our bond funds are negative about 250,000. And we received a director's report, and then voted on new officers. On the 18th, Partnership for Health met and voted on new officers for the next year, but Becker may have a new delegate next year. And the only voting member on the board are four commissioners and two community members. I was there as an alternate. They talked about having two commissioners from each county sit on that board. I didn't think that was necessary. I thought it would be tough to get two people from our county to show up to the board meetings, and it would dilute our vote more. Then they talked about having a extra community member from, or a community member from each county, and sort of rotating it, where two get to appoint it, and then two others get to appoint it. They want the commissioner appointed to their board anymore? Yeah, Pat, you know, somebody called you about this. I guess the board wants me to stay on, and we have a full board. I think it's good for them to maintain a relationship with the county, but the county doesn't really put levy dollars into the service anymore. So it's something that the director called Pat about, and you guys can consider it, otherwise they can invite me back when they have a board vacancy, you know, when somebody comes off. Eleven, on November 30th, Transit met. We ended October up 18.8% in ridership. We're trending 16% up in November, even after a day without phones for a whole afternoon, and we lost about 80 rides. We may have about $200,000 of grant money unspent at the end of the year, which we would give back. We'd give it back after we get kind of audited and complete the contract, so we'd probably hold on to that money for about a year after this grant is done. Kevin needs some body repair work done on two buses. We asked if he can prepay for the work. He just can't take one of the buses out of service rate to get anything fixed. We're still waiting on the federal large audit, which could go back eight years. It won't even get started until April or later now. And we've been talking about getting FFNE for the new highway building, and allowing Kevin to make many purchases under $5,000 total, so he doesn't have to go through procurement. Kevin mentioned some consultants he will have access to soon through the Office of Transportation. They're just going to be on staff all the time to help transit operations, and he also mentions the need for Jefferson Bus to pick people up from an indoor space. I suggested the sheriff's lobby or police department. This would be at like 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m., and both of those places are always open. You guys have any problem with that? Okay.
I think just out of that, the reason the switch is, a lot of times, it's closed up there, and people, Kevin's picked up people up there, they're really cold.
Right.
They're standing there waiting, or have been dropped off, and their hands are almost froze, and we just need a warm spot for them to come in, and so we thought the lobby over there would work, someplace secure.
Yeah, the depot gets closed, locked at 8:30, so. At 11:30.
I don't know if the DL Police doesn't, they don't still have doors open, do they?
I think that outer lobby was going to be open, just through the first door. Yeah, it's a small. Yeah. So this would be a little better.
This is from 11:30 till 1, but, you know, this is fine. I think it's a good spot. That's okay with you. You know, it's in the middle of the day, just a place for people to get out of the cold. I don't think there's too many people either, just beyond really cold days. Okay, and then the good news is, we're going to make offers to two new employees, one which has a CDL license, and Kevin thinks they'll stay with the department for a while. And he'll also be spending money on some print ads and getting new rubber sealants on the garage doors down there at the fair. Okay, on the first museum building committee met, they were checking things off the list. John gave a report. You know, I think that, had Herzog done any work on the roof at that time?
He was coming back.
He hasn't.
They had a conversation with him, and he was supposed to go over there, I think, this week.
Okay, they're way, you know, late.
Just to finish up on.
Then on the fifth, AMC met General Policy Committee met, and added language to the platform that addressed long-term PRA disability and PTSD. We would like for there to be a mandatory rehabilitation process and evaluation, and then look for another position within the department for all first responders, try to accommodate them rather than have them get on disability. We also added language that requests equal percentage split between employer-paid and employee contributions to PRA if the state decides to put some of their surplus money into the program. And then finally, there was some language added to the requests, to request the state and federal monies be used to increase the, the work county governments are doing with IT space for security purposes. And they moved our internet build-out language into the Infrastructure Policy Committee. And then there was also an election to the MCIT Board for my position, that's going to be filled by Kurt Mortensen from Fergus Falls. And then on the seventh Human Services met, we had negotiated new rates for SNBC with UKR, which is in our packet here. They're a new provider with SNBC, and the committee asked them to go back and negotiate a little tougher, and it sounds like they were quite pleased with the turnout of that and the results we got. We also looked at all of our contracts. Many of them don't change from the prior year. Several had rate increases of about 5%, but they're not to exceed amount, and the contract stayed the same. And there were also a few contracts that are still being negotiated, so we asked for an extension through an addendum for 90 days. That's it.
Busy.
Oh, yeah.
Harry?
Attended Marshall Watland's retirement. It was very nicely attended, so congratulations to Marshall on her retirement from last Friday. Lakeland Mental Health, they're still doing very well. Everything's on schedule for their building in Moorhead. There, it used to be, I think I've said this before, their psychiatry was the one that always pulled them down, and that's in the black right now. I mean, it's still in the black, so. They're billing appropriately, like at Sunnyside, if you don't bill appropriately into the highest level, then you probably can't cash it, but they're doing a real, real nice job. One other thing at Highway that we talked about is maybe having an open house this spring before it opens officially, so allow the public to go in and take a quick look at it. Probably won't be as extensive as the jail, but it'll be easier to show them around because you don't have to tour as much. It's such a nice area, and that maybe even have a staff day out there to show staff. And I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive when you walk in that building and you see how large it is, and when you're going to fill it up, it'll fill up fast. And it's nice and clean now, nice and white paint, and. Let's see, AMC, they had a couple really good speakers. I won't, I won't go into what, what their, what their, what their premise was, but the second one was the 10, what was it, the 10 crises or risks, and very, he was more into police and law enforcement and rescue EMS stuff, but really, really good, really good.
Quite a background, and when you speak, he never took hardly a breath.
No, no.
For 40 minutes, just.
But he talked about some incentive things for our current employees, and I'd like to look at that after the first year. One of them would be like, ask employees to recruit. If every employee recruited for you, then it adds that many more people to staff, and I think that'd be a real good idea. And I think Clay County actually does a bounty, so if you get someone to sign up from yours, then they'd give, after so much time on the job, they'll give you a cash incentive.
Yeah, there, I went to Employee Relations one, down there, workshop, and that was brought up and different ideas.
Yeah.
How to retain and attract.
Governor Walz was there and spoke, and. Um, Governor Walz was there and spoke and uh, of course, one thing that I found interesting, well, he had a good joke. He had a standing ovation partially from the crowd and he said, he said, but this is what he said. He said, I really appreciate those eleven counties stood up a little faster. So he recognizes, you know, the, the difficulties, but he did mention uh, you know, he's talking about bonding bill and he mentioned the city of D- Dilworth um, in the bonding bill. I mean, he mentioned specifically them in, in passing, but like, boy, um, he wants some bonding suggestions. I mean, the city of Audubon needs one. I know, you know, all these rural, we should encourage them to put in requests. Cause if you're mentioning city of Dilworth Fire Department.
That was a fire hall.
So, um, anyway, is very good. And the, and the contacts you have down at AMC are, are very valuable. Um, even though we don't get everything we want, hopefully we can move that, move that uh, big ship, the direction we're looking at. They know I had some nice conversations. Um, I did, did get a call from um, a reporter from Minnesota Public Radio about the feedlot. So I don't know if that's gonna be on, but uh, they were, they were ta- talking about the feedlot that we had and, and and we're, I just, and the moratorium and I just stated that, you know, it's a balance. We know, we don't wanna infringe on our small farmers, but we wanna look at what, what's, what worries them. So I said, we're just looking at templates still. But uh, I think where this interview was going is what rights the tribe have on their moratorium and, and if they have regulatory authority to do anything. I quite, I said, I don't know. I said, I don't know if it, if they're talking within tribal boundaries of tribal members or tribal lands. I said, I don't know. I said, that, that's where we, a lot of the questions answer. So there's some significant concerns over what that means and where that goes. So I guess we'll find out.
One other, Barry, you mentioned broadband and uh, transportation and broadband committee brought up that there was a hundred million dollars for projects in, in Minnesota.
Mm-hmm.
And I went through the list of the companies that have applied. None of our, our providers around here have even applied for anything like Arbig or um, any of others. So I was kind, so that's kinda interesting because they must have some spots that they can expand and build out for their own.
Well, they're really interested in taking anymore, are they?
I don't know.
They kinda hit all the hot populated stuff. We've tried to get them to at EDA, we've tried to get them to
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
To expand. They're just not, they don't, they don't want, they're not interested in it at all. There are not a people there, I don't think.
Well, the, there's a map that was supposed to be sent to each county, uh, a broadband map and I, I don't, I'm not aware where it went, but um, there's a map of the, the speeds and if it's not accurate, we, we are the ones that are supposed to appeal that. And so there's, there could be more monies available. So if you feel there's a, according to the map, that that's not accurate, like if there's pockets somewhere, then we have to identify those. Cause if they're not identified, then they don't qualify for some of this funding.
And they just west of town here, Prairie Lake area. I don't think they're.
There's some pockets in there that are really bad.
And uh, who, who serves them? Uh, one of the telephone companies and.
Arbig, what? Century Link?
Century Link. And they haven't updated. And Arbig had a proposal, probably go in there, but.
Well, you understand the process of, of like Arbig going in there. They have to pay a fee. And then Century Link has the rights of that area. And if Century Link fights them, then they lose that. I mean, they can delay it for a year to two without doing anything. And then Arbig will lose that. I think it was at the time either a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee to go forward with that. So they're not willing just to go and jump on something to hope they can get it because it's Century Links. They kinda own the rights that. And if they fight it, they have to pay that fee. And then Century Link has to, so they kinda go to Century Link and say, are, are you gonna fight this? If we, then if they say yes, then they just walk away. And they don't bother with it. So it's.
The Center for Link doesn't update.
No, they've hit, like you said, they, they got the hotspots, but they wanna hold these. If they grow, then they can expand a little bit and they'll.
That was your point, wasn't it? That, that they hadn't applied for any new areas.
But if you're, if you got, you're gonna lose money on it.
You know, yeah, what's the downside?
What's the downside?
I mean, if you, you don't want anybody in your area, you don't want them in there. There's no penalty for you.
No, you have, if you have, you have, you're buying time if you say no right away. Cause if they do the official, then you have to, then you have to address it. And then if you say, then, then you have, you can delay it for a year to two and, and then it has, then you have to say, well, you can have it. By that time, you know, it, it takes time. And, and you know, for profit, for-profit businesses wanna turnaround of three to five years before they make money. You get these co-ops out in the east part of the county, you know, they're finding a ten, fifteen-year turnaround. They're like, you know, they're not, their goal isn't to make money. It's to service the customer. So it's a different mindset. Um, did also attend MRC, which you all know Dan Larson is retired and we have a, a new um, group. And this is the first time ever we've got out early of the meeting. So hopefully that is continuing. And our policy committee got out early too. It's the first time, I'm like, this is a so it's a first on both of them that we've got out early. Usually we're very late. Um, there was discussion about proba- probation, about county-based or DOC. I think we are, we looked into that years ago and, and we are fortunate because we kinda have the, the center hub here. So we have probably more, more exposure than what we, or more services than what we pay for. Um, and then they're doing, are y'all familiar with the, the PFAS? The
PFAS.
The fluorocarbons?
Yep.
Um, and Lion County is doing a study on it, monitoring the effects in Lion County. So um, one of the concerns in environmental is they're kinda targeting your landfills to make sure they're not leaching. Um, but there's so many more uncontrolled areas and unmonitored areas that they're like, don't single out this group. I mean, it's decent, but don't say that's your only problem of the, the PF, the PFAS. Um, if everyone knows what PFAS are, that's the plastics that have that little film on them, like burger stuff and um, it's um, I don't know if you, they said this during the, during our meeting that Schwan's found out about it years ago, eliminated it completely. So Schwan's doesn't have it. Now you see it on Cookware and it's, you know, now you buy a pan that says, you know, PFAS free. I mean, there's no, so I mean it, I think most people recognize that we, we have to, you know, it's not a, it's not a huge deal to change us, I don't think for, I mean, for some companies of just a change of chemical processing. So but hopefully we get ahead of it sooner, you know, sooner than later and so it's not continuing, you know, we don't keep building it up. I don't think it's there was a, I just read in the, in the, I think it was Star Trib that there's a, there's a pumping system now that pumps up water. And they, it, so this, this PFAS foams and then they take the foam off and pump it back in the, into the water system, into the water table. That's kinda expensive, but.
We had a conversation yesterday about an MOU with testing at our landfill. We're going to have to do it at our landfill, but there's an issue with the waste energies and I'll report in my Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste. It's very expensive, like fifty thousand dollars to test. If you're done, Barry, I'll.
Go ahead.
Okay, I had a Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste um, meeting. That was one of my meetings. Uh, there's gonna be three new commissioners on that board next year. Uh, Patty, uh, Betty Murphy was defeated. Gary Keneese was defeated. And then of course I'm retiring. So there'll be three new uh, members on that board. Uh, reviewed and accept the financials. Estimated tonnage for the year is gonna be fifty-two thousand, one fifty-eight. Uh, we paid Otter Tail loan and interest at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Cash balance at the end of November was one point five nine six million with a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar balance in our internal service account. So things financially is finally starting to look up here. Uh, Becker's running a six hundred and fifty, a forty-three ton surplus. Clay has a thirteen hundred and twenty ton deficit. So we're working with Clay right now to see if we can't somehow, cause we, you know, we, we can't take as much to Fargo. Um, so we're working with them to see if we can't do some swapping or trading or maybe use some of their tonnage up down here. Um. See. Okay, still have not agreed to a voluntary PFAP testing. The state of Minnesota wanted us, our MPCA wanted us to do the testing at uh, all the waste energies. And it's very expensive. They were in the legislation supposed to appropriate money for that testing and that sounds like now they're, they're working on it again. Um, so, but they're only asking for voluntary testing and we declined and so have all the other waste energies until they produce some money to help do that testing. There, the thought is that it'd get burnt up probably in combustion, but with testing will show that. And it's very, it's hard to test for it. It's gotta be completely separate from any other test. And that's why it's sort of expensive, but.
And then, and then even the ash, they wanna test the ash.
Yeah.
Afterwards.
Yeah. Okay, environmental, uh, you guys all got the minutes from the environmental meeting and the uh, construction meeting. I'll just hit uh, one of the things that the, at the last construction meeting, there was the change order request um, for ten thousand dollars actually. The outside contractor, the cons, or the um, grave contractor decided that, I think he was trying to do a good thing. He would, he put in the pipe or the sprinkling system, which was a plastic PVC pipe. And it was approved prior to him putting it in there. The problem was he's not allowed to work inside the building. You have to be a licensed plumber to work inside the building. And then when the inspector came around and what happened was the original inspector went out, uh, his wife had a baby, so he was on maternity leave and the other inspector came in and apparently wasn't in a very good mood and said, we can't have that. So it had to be all torn out and a steel pipe put in by licensed plumbers. So um, but the thing about it is the, the specification was that it could, it had to be steel unless approved for plastic. So they weren't allowed to have that change order. They weren't, and that was their responsibility and the first thing, the only extra thing they had to do was dig it back out and put it in. So.
So who's gonna pay for that?
Hmm?
Who's gonna take the hit on that?
Well, Essert Plumbing is the one that was requesting it. I'm not sure it was all justified. The, the ten thousand dollars was justified. Um, the, the architect says, no, it's in specs. You you were, you were supposed to do it anyway. Put in the steel pipe if you were not approved, approved for the plastic. And then the other guy just kinda did it cause he was digging the line in up to the building. So he just stuck it inside the building. But really, I, I don't know. Does anybody's gonna take a real hit on it, you know? They just had to do what they supposed to do in the. Well, I don't, I think there was much extra to it.
Barry, what, what was the wood chips? I don't, I didn't understand how wood chips on the road would help.
Apparently that keeps it, the, if they put wood chips over the top and they did it where they're gonna drill the well too, to keep the frost from going down.
Also, it's not a driving surface.
No, it's mostly for, in, in, in mud absorption and water absorption. Yeah. I didn't know if that was gonna work or not. And then you're gonna have to scrape it all up, I think to, you know, I didn't, I didn't know if that was a great idea, but it was what they did. Uh, by the way, there is plenty of wood chips out there. So if anybody needs this for mulch and stuff in the spring, there's lots of it. It's down, cut down pretty fine because it did all that grinding out there. Anything else on the minutes that you guys read that any question on? Okay, uh, natural resource, uh, discussed the summer intern seasonal forester at a cost of ten thousand four hundred and eight dollars per season. Um, lands off, lands offered to the county to the conservation fund. It was determined that both of them are leased. So they won't be up for sale for, till the lease is in. Um, let's see. We discussed the Wise Property. We're gonna have a Zoom meeting on December nineteenth. Barry, you gonna be able to?
Well, the nineteenth is Monday, right?
I don't know, is it?
Nope.
But at like five thirty at night though, I think.
Yeah.
So hopefully can finalize that purchase agreement at Bucksmore. It's great. Yeah. Um, they filed, finalized working on the South Twin Axis. You know, we've been dealing with that for, I don't know, a lot of years. And finally, I think they're getting down to the point where they then do a quiet title out there and we'll own it at the end and it'll be, Mary, we're getting close, right? Oh. Okay, alright. Uh, treats, uh, tree seeding quotes and the demo of the tax forfeit buildings before us today. Then we had a sheriff's committee meeting, talked about the ACH and we'll be talking about that, I guess, later. EDA reviewed and approved the financials, held a public meeting for the, the five-year plan that we do annually. There was no comments. Uh, one mural home is up for sale in twenty-one by Anderson Gravel Pit. One mural home needs extensive repair. Case management at Mohoobee, the individual that was doing it was doing a great job, has resigned to take a different position. So that program is suffering a little bit right now. And public housing is full. All ahead.
Are you guys gonna kinda keep Mitch working on some of that EDA stuff or what? Looked like he got the quotes on that teardown.
Yeah, that's kinda how it was done before.
Tax forfeited, kinda.
Yeah.
Kind of falls under.
Under land, land use, yeah, yeah. Okay, appointments, any appointment?
Would've been a mural, then it would be MMCC.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair, we have uh, on page eleven here, we have the appointment of the uh, county coroner. And it's done every four years. I was able to uh, speak to Dr. Thorsgaard. He was willing to continue to do that. Uh, he did have some questions as to salary, but this appointment did, in the previous um, appointments resolutions did not include salary. So I indicated we'd continue to have some discussion, but so we're just looking for um, board approval for his four-year appointment.
Okay, we have a resolution one, two, 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 one G to reappoint the county coroner with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ben.
Sorry.
And my John, any discussion? All those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion time, hearing none, motion carried. Tony Administrator.
Yeah, just a few items. Um, just wanna make sure the board is aware. City council requested using um, the third floor jury room for um, for their TNT hearing la- uh, yesterday and also a city council meeting this evening. Of course, their facility is under some construction. Um, we also have the airport commission that meets uh, in the boardroom now regularly for, for now till, till they're able to move back into the city um, council building. Uh, and it's all worked out very well and they're very appreciative of, of being allowed to use the space. Uh, bargaining unit negotiations are continuing. We expect to finish all first round negotiations here still this month. Um, there was uh, the highway building closing. I know we've had a few emails out to the board on that. Um, that's scheduled now for this Friday to close. Uh, I wanted to remind the board that uh, you know, the request for the uh, uh, for the purchaser is for us to make a, an, a property insurance request while we're leasing. Uh, leasing the beneficiary with Bremer Bank as the beneficiary. And uh, in my email to the board, you were fine with that. Um, we have updated the lease payback and then also um, updated the amendment to the purchase agreement to allow us to close on uh, this Friday. Um, Commissioner Knutson and I will do the closing. One final item, just to remind the board and the board agreed uh, this via email. Is there some environmental work that they've asked uh, for the county to purchase? There was a resolution, as you recall earlier about paying a portion of that and their request came back to pay, asking the county to pay for the whole thing. And so we'll need to kinda check for that unless there's any questions the board has. Uh, our plan is to close on this Friday. Uh, and then just a couple of final items, Chair. Um, the um, the mend, uh, we'll be talking about here uh, here shortly. So maybe we'll just segue right to it. Um, but we did have a meeting, uh, sheriff committee meeting on Thursday. Uh, you have a letter in front of you uh, outlining uh, men's request to give uh, ninety days notice. Um, and so we've been working really hard to find an alternative and a solution. And so the sheriff, you wanna come up and we could talk about options. Um, we have to be real creative here, uh, cause we have nurses uh, that we'd like to keep and we'd like to transition to a new organization as quick as possible. So with your permission, Chair, we'll, Sheriff, talk about it.
Yes, so we discussed this at our sheriff committee meeting last Friday. Uh, we're looking for option for professional healthcare. And the, the one option that we do have ECH, it presented to the board back in nineteen, the board, he went with mend on the uh, one benefit with uh, ECH as they are, I mean, Clay County. And uh, and uh, again, like God said, we would like to retain our nurses there for the retirement. Just looking for the discussion on this.
Well, I'll follow on with the sheriff. The real request that we'll have to have is um, ACH is not gonna be a less expensive vendor. It's going to cost uh, the county more. Um, the, we are under contract with Ben, even though they've exercised their uh, ending, uh, which they can do per contractual obligations. We're still paying them on a monthly basis. I, I think the challenge that we have is there are two nurses uh, that are employed by Mend, uh, under the oversight of Mend. We do not wanna lose them. Uh, they do not wanna leave. Um, but right now there is a concern about their compensation. Uh, as I understand, they're not being paid by Mend and Mend has gone, is currently in chapter eleven negotiations. Um, so our plan or strategy, our recommendation is to bring these nurses on for the month of December as contract labor. And uh, the, and also um, um, negotiate and bring to you on December twentieth, a contract from ECH to start uh, January one. Uh, they've indicated if those nurses are there, it's an easy thing for them to absorb and bring a part of the ACH group. Um, but again, there will be an additional cost with ACH and we've known that because we've been looking at them as a vendor. Um, I have asked uh, our county attorney to review the existing contract with Ben to make sure we know what our options are and when we can end the relationship um, to bring ACH on board. And so the county attorney's. And so the county attorney is also in the loop line, sir.
I just confirmed one of the nurses did not.
And bringing them on, just a final thought, bringing them on as contract labor, there would be an agreement if they do get compensated by Mend, that they would reimburse the county for those, for those costs. But they very much want to stay here and I think the sheriff's office very much would like to keep them because they've done a solid job. And it's, it's, it's an easy transition from ACH's perspective as long as they don't leave. If they were to leave, then it takes a lot longer, like months, to be able to transit, transit an ACH, which affects our bed count. It affects our revenue.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I did send some notes. There is a place called Bi Decor and Well Path, two different services. I had emailed that information back in April 20th of this year. So I'll resend it. You get some.
Was that a couple that Chris had checked on?
I'm not sure about that one, but I played it for.
Yeah, I thought he meant they don't want to do any business in Minnesota.
I think they're doing business in Minnesota.
There, there, a couple of them that we got quotes or checked with said they wouldn't, weren't interested. They're in Wisconsin, they might be in Iowa. They might have some in Minnesota, but they're not interested anymore.
Well, fortunately, we won't have to sign a long-term contract so that we can be searching and looking for other vendors anyways.
I think our main concern is just going.
Transition, yeah.
This year.
Search a long term.
Yeah, the recommendation would be for a one-year contract and it doesn't appear it would cost us more or less by doing a one or two or three year. And it would give us breathing room to be able to function as a county, keep the nurses, keep our beds full, get, get the maximum amount of revenue we can and then revisit for 2024.
Okay, anything else under that? Any questions? Thank you. Are you continuing?
Yes, sir. Page 12, under contracts, we have the, one of the CHIPS attorneys was up, Mr. Timothy Dodd. He had a contract and you're seeing the old contract that expired in 2021. You did an extension for him for 2022. And what our request is to do in speaking with him is to do another extension for 2023. The other two CHIPS attorneys do not expire until end of 2023. I did verify with the county attorney that this agreement as written and the extension would suffice. He's comfortable with that. He's also indicated that Mr. Dodd is doing work and doing CHIPS work on behalf of the county. So we'd be looking for approval to, to do that extension with Mr. Dodd.
Mr. Lord.
Motion.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried.
I think we need a motion for, for the men, for the nurses though, to start to go through that negotiation, don't you?
I think, well, we could do that, but.
Well, yeah, we're going to bring a contract back to you, yeah, but I, we're hoping you've endorsed the strategy, but yeah, motion would certainly be helpful.
Okay. Got a motion by John to, to what, John?
To do the contract.
With the nurses?
With the nurses.
Labor, okay.
What, what, second, what do you need on that? I mean, what do you, you want authorization to negotiate and bring back the contract?
That was what we discussed at the.
Is that the word that would be appropriate?
It was just for discussion, but I would like to.
I mean, we.
But, but let's, I think we should have a, let's amend that to temporarily pay the nurses.
Yeah, we should get them paid because it is.
With, with, with a clawback if there's, if they get paid, they have to return the money, but.
Yeah.
That okay?
I don't know. I mean, I think whatever your committee wants to do, just be mindful of liability issues if something goes wrong.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what kind of contract you have, so I would be, I don't, I would be careful about making motions.
You.
So we, Chris has reached out to other counties that have done similar with their nurses. We were waiting for a good contract to come out. And we won't get that with our county attorney, that's wish as well.
Let the committee members know too.
I, I think we need to have a, a motion authorizing them to do the negotiations and come back to ratify whatever. I mean, to give some leeway because otherwise it's not, you can't just pay someone working for another company without board action.
Well, we should pay them if they're working for us and they're not getting paid. It's the holiday season and if they're not.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm saying we have to authorize that then.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
And maybe just. I don't know how you want to word it, John, but just authorize the sheriff's.
Well, we got the hourly rates, but they're getting paid, no.
Yes.
And that's basically what we discussed.
And how you, how you word that.
Yeah.
In the contractual agreement has to be worked out with the committee and I think we need to authorize you to negotiate that.
Like he's saying, we are waiting for some language from other counties that have done this and are paying their nurses. Correct, right.
Because of the same issue.
Same issue, yeah.
So the motion should read authorize negotiations and authorize to incur an expense for those and to negotiate that contract. And then to come back and ratify.
Okay, John?
Some, I mean, something that word, she'll gives you some leeway.
We'll figure it out.
And the county attorney will be of allties involved with it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
I'll make the second chair.
Barry.
Barry, Commissioner Nelson. So getting back to the civil commitment attorney, that's the Kitzman Law Office. They are agreeable to continue to provide that service. So you see their old agreement and then you see their email on, on what they would like to change for amounts. So for 2023, they'd be looking at being paid 23, 2350, 2024, 2500 and 2025, 2500. Reviewed this with the county attorney. He's agreeable to their approach of just updating and editing the agreement with those new numbers. He certainly is very appreciative of the law office and having them continue on. So we would like support for the board to authorize that new agreement with those numbers.
Wishes to the board? Have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Knock rocket sites here, guys. Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Have you ever worked on a rocket?
Or made one? Didn't work very well.
Budget review.
Yes, and just to remind the board that we have a public hearing scheduled here for this Thursday. That would include not only the truth and taxation presentation with staff is finalizing here this week, but it'll have the county highway plan and the 2023 smart sales tax appropriation plan. One of the things we're looking at with the smart plan is whether some language should be included to broaden the use of it within the highway department. And we're benchmarking some other counties that have done that. There are some counties as an example that have gone outside just the traditional road construction and focused on building debt service, things like that. So we want to make sure with board approval that we've got a resolution that is as flexible as possible to meet our budgetary needs. So we'll have the TNT hearing at 6:00. It was put in the paper for one week. And our hope is, is we'll get some feedback from the public and some direction from the board so we can certify the budget next week.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
On Harper review, I just want to give an update on kind of where we're at on what's been allocated. There's been approximately 2.8 million that's been allocated so far. You, you have one agenda item from the sheriff's office on drones later on in the, in the board meeting. The, the most recent one was the digitization of some of the other departmental records that we've signed that agreement after board approved that. And so our plan is to move forward with that with all haste. And like I said, we'll have one agenda item with regards to drones on the, later in the board.
Okay. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. The first item I have this morning is the regular claims auditor warrants over 90 days and additional requesting a motion to approve.
Who'd approve?
Motion by John.
Second. Mr. Chair, or Mary, we're all over 90 days pulled. Nothing.
Who's second?
No comment.
Uh, no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
The only license we have.
It doesn't change anyway. That's the end.
It doesn't. It's just about done.
The only license we have is a renewal tobacco Dollar General Cormorant Township.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Ben. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Then we have this September cash comparisons, sales, tax and investment summary.
Move to accept.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Barry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried. You have it all in front of you, I think you all believe you have it. I'll just read the last. Now, therefore, I, Tim Walls, Governor of Minnesota, due hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. It's County, City, Tribal and State Health and Human Service Workers' Day. Thank, thank you staff very much.
Thanks Denise.
Didn't want to read it all. Move to appear approved.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Second item on another contract.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
I'll approve the Adult Mental Health Initiative CSP grant.
Motion by Ben. Second by Richard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Yeah, we can do it once, but Pat, what was it that you were saying about these?
Yes, so in, in your packet, it just wasn't on the agenda and it's also in your financial statement. D1 Rural Minnesota CEP, D2 Muhubi OTWA, E1 Kevin Neiman, E2 Robert Strand and E3 Fathers Resource Program should also be considered as contracts for approval.
And those aren't on the finance minutes?
They, they are and they're also in the packet, they just weren't on the agenda.
They're in the packet.
The, the county board agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve all the contracts presented to us in addition to those that Pat just made name that are in the packet. The contracts, the amendments and any extensions.
Okay, motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you Denise.
And, and just for the interest of time, I think Jeannie just had a real quick item.
Sure.
Your permission just to have Jeannie come up and she's also running a department up there, so I didn't want to keep her.
And you said there was a change, there was a misprint or something, Mandy, you want to point that out?
The second date on the bottom says April.
Of the resolutions, okay, all right. Right, wishes to the board.
Motion approved 12221A.
Motion by Barry. Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. You're moving.
As you can see on the agenda, I have several items. So starting with the modifications of the personnel policy should have been included in your packet. The red items are items just for your reference, items that I rewrote. Crossouts are modification in language. So I'm not sure when I asked for suggestions through the finance committee specifically to this about how to present this, suggested that I bring this in sections and hence here's the first section of the personnel policy modifications. So if there's, I guess, any suggestions of how you'd like me to do this or if you would just want me to take questions.
Do you want to maybe point out your changes or is it?
Sure, I can do a quick highlight run through if that would be helpful. So starting on the first page, within the personnel policy, there wasn't a mission statement, so I first wrote that. So that is in, starting at the beginning. So that was in, included in this. I did not do any rewrites initially on the index just because I was entertaining some changes in here and I will go back to that. So probably next round. So then I am at the top of page two. I restructured or rewrote with reference to the personnel records. Really just taking up the language that had previously been there with regards to the human service files, which I've talked about in the past. And I also referenced the statutes that speak to directly to personnel records. So pretty straightforward on that.
So are the, Denise, have you been, did you have any input on this, on, on personnel records of your?
Yeah, just for, and I've had some conversations with Denise and, and this will be a work in progress. They do have some really good processes that they do through the hiring and with their files. And certainly that'll be a joint effort, you know, in getting the, the files moved. So that's been a, a discussion ongoing.
How about the sheriff's department?
The sheriff's department has not moved their files.
Is the file moving something you were, ask for input on or for personnel policies? So, so how do you want to, how do you want to move forward with that language on?
I'm not modifying any language that wasn't previously there. It had always indicated that all files were, with the exception of the human, human service files being in our office. So I did not modify any of the language.
Where is that referenced?
It, in the prior policy, there was never any reference with regards to the sheriff's department files being kept in the sheriff's department. I just took out the language where indicated that the human service files would be moved.
Where's the human service language that was taken out? Did you say you took that out?
I did.
Where is that?
It was in the prior, I, I apologize, I didn't, normally I was crossing out what I took out and that particular I rewrote and didn't leave. It just basically said, it gave the exception for the human service files to be kept in their department. It was in the prior, I apologize, I didn't, normally I was crossing out what I took out, and that particular, I rewrote and didn't leave, it just basically said, it gave the exception for the Human Service files to be kept in their department. So really, I just took out that language indicating that all files would be in the, in the Human Resource Department.
I prefer you include everything that you've taken out, because there was some language in here that, that you just added red print in, and had a continuation of sentences that made no sense, then if you're not showing us what was stricken. If there was nothing stricken, the sentence doesn't make sense. So something was stricken that now I don't know what was stricken.
Correct, what was stricken was, and again, I can reference that, but really, the language, the only language that was taken.
This is ongoing in here, I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
So how do you, how do we know what changed if we don't see what was stricken out prior?
Yeah, and this particular sentence I rewrote, and like I said, I didn't leave that language in, and I should have. So if you want me to bring that back, I certainly can. That section.
Well, I see other areas where there's, what I'm saying is there's red lines, or there's red writing, and then it's a continuation of a sentence. So you've changed something, but I don't know what it was prior to you putting that.
Yes, and again, trying to make it reader-friendly was, is somewhat difficult. So really, what I was trying to accomplish is writing in red where I added, and with the exception of the Personnel Files, because I started there. But in the red is where I added, and where I crossed out is language that I am requesting to remove. So I mean, if you have a better suggestion of how you'd like it done.
I'm saying that I know that's what you did, I'm saying it wasn't done throughout this thing, because there's, as we move forward, you'll see there's, there's red language that's, that goes into a sentence that continues that. So there was something that you replaced that with, I'm saying, and it doesn't show.
Okay.
In other areas.
Okay. Do you have a specific example?
Well, we move on, there's, there's a couple of them, yeah.
Okay. So do you want me to continue moving on?
Well, I don't.
Or what would you like me to do?
This is the board decision, I don't know, it hasn't, it didn't go through courthouse committee, and it hasn't been vetted at the, the department heads. I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to do, to review this. I mean, I, I think it's a good initiative to do that. I think it needs to be vetted at a lower level before it comes to full board discussion. I mean, I don't want to go line by line and discuss it today, but.
There are certainly some things in here I would not be supporting.
Okay.
And I, when I read it, I thought that would be the case. And that's why we're having this discussion, but maybe, maybe not at this level, you choose not to do that, but you will.
What did you want to do, go motion by motion?
No, I think this is just information, and, and, I mean, we're, this is just the beginning of the process, there will be time to vet this. This is just what you're showing us right now, right?
Correct.
Right.
Well, there's a more efficient way to handle this, which would be at a committee level, and I mean, it's in our packet, I can see what I like and what I don't like, that's not difficult. So I have no reason to go through here line by line on that, because I read it.
Really, for informational purposes, you'll have time, or you and I won't have a lot of time, but to have this discussion or put your input into it. I think she's just showing you what she's working on right now.
Okay.
Basically, I think that's the idea, right?
Yeah, and to get some clarification about where you'd like this vetted, because, you know, it pertains more to than just the courthouse committee, it's, you know, all, all employees. I did bring it forth to when we had a department head meeting, as well as, you know, the Finance Committee, just because that was representative of, of, you know, all employees, so.
So did you ask the, the department heads then to bring it back with suggestions, or not?
I didn't hear any suggestions. I mean, I was open to suggestions, there were some suggestions with regards to one particular section when we were talking about work from home, and what that would look like with regards to closures, with regards to weather.
So apparently, they're not interested in hearing what you're highlighting, so let's move on.
Well, we read the, I mean, we read it.
Well, maybe all of us didn't, I don't know that.
Okay.
Could I ask, just, could the board not doing it this meeting, but could they provide that feedback to Carrie in email? It sounds like Commissioners have identified certain items. Send an email to her.
Oh.
I mean, most of what's in here that took any of the, anything that went to the board got taken out frequently in this. And I don't know why we would make those changes, because it seems like what we've been doing has been working. Like, all the vacant positions HR and administration would just post and hire for rather than getting approval. You know, so we would stop seeing, you know, the steps and the budget cost and the narratives when it comes to replacing positions. That's a good time for us to look for efficiencies and see if we even need the positions, or if we can combine things. So everything that had to do with that, and all the other places that you took the board out of anything, here's my suggestion.
Right.
I would not do that. And I would especially not do it without a committee that's vetted it, and would give us a report when we do our reports and correspondence that say, hey, I was in this committee, I went through these changes, this is what they were thinking, here's why we did this. I didn't hear any committee report on that. So there's.
Do we have a Personnel Meeting?
Not going to tape it up, but.
We don't, but I would tell you, the Department Ed Committee was very supportive of those, of the changes, and those particular changes. And, and I would tell you, just based on the benchmarking that we've done, it's, I can't think of another county that does it the way Becker County, not suggesting that Becker County's doing it wrong. It's just, it's not, it hasn't been established as a best practice, and so we'd have reviewed it at the Department Ed Committee, and the Department was very supportive of it. A lot of time that goes into reviewing items that are positions that are already in budget for it, and, and I think that was the thinking from staff, is how to make things more efficient and get positions filled.
Yeah, I don't need to hear every position. If there's a position and somebody leaves, you don't need to come and ask me if you can replace them.
Yeah, and if I may, that, that was really the intent of when you referenced, you know, taking it out, as far as presenting it to the board, it wasn't for any new positions, it was for existing positions that were already budgeted for, to fill them for efficiencies, and not having to bring it back to the board for permission to fill positions that have already been budgeted for. That was really the language that I removed.
Well, I'd even be more comfortable with that, having the authority of the board chair, or, you know, advertising to fill it with the authority of the board chair, and then having it ratified. But it gets difficult to, you know, when you never see it as a county board, it's something that's just going to get away from you, you know. How are we ever going to know? Like I do with certain departments, say there's this many positions, this one's retiring, you know, this has been open for eleven months, we can probably take this out of the budget. Or, you know, we need to recruit people for this. I think it's valuable to have the board know about the positions, and if we never do, we can come up with the efficiencies without, without rewriting all of this. And some of the rewrites were very good.
I'm not saying that, I don't know what direction this board or the next board will take, if they want less or more. What I'm saying is this needs to be vetted through, through the department head work, a work session, through committee work session, maybe a full board work session, just to, just to look at what direction are, do we want to go? Do we want to have less, or do you want to more involved?
Well, I think you got what you're looking for.
Did I?
I think you did.
Okay.
You need more participation, apparently, to satisfy this board, we'll see what the next board does, but.
Okay, just so I'm clear, so I know you're referencing committee, and you're referencing a work session with department heads, what is the preference? I just want to be clear on what's expected.
It could be both, or all of the above.
Yeah, I would, I would say that we, in my opinion, revisit in January, and we determine how we want to move forward with some of these, and, and how that board would like to review these. I think they're good.
I'm sorry.
Good initiatives, and, and.
Did we not establish some type of committee for personnel? Thought we did.
I don't have any of the on committee, it says personnel committee.
Didn't you suggest some type of a Personnel Committee?
Well, Richard, I on a.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
On a, some sort of Personnel Committee, it hasn't done anything business.
Well, let's, let's use that committee, you guys are still be here, let's use that committee to vet this Personnel Policy.
Okay, I'm sorry, which committee?
Well, let's call it the Personnel Policy Committee.
Yeah, but I don't think that's what it is, I think it's called the Labor Relations Committee, isn't that the title?
Called Labor Rel.
What's it called? I thought, did I get it wrong, what's the name of it?
We called it, called it, the lack of a better word, like the former Fish Committee, it was Employee Relationship, not a Labor, Labor.
Yeah, but that was the one established earlier this year, right? Okay, alright.
Let's use that.
I didn't want to get the title wrong, but I'll, yeah, that was brought up, so that's, that is a committee, I, like, as indicated, I don't think there's been established guidelines of what it's doing, but it's, it does exist.
The work program.
Yeah, well, it's fine, I mean, in the end, I think right now, in the Personnel Policy, and this is something maybe the board might want to respond to, is when we want to change something to the Personnel Policy, there are no guidelines to do that, and maybe it would be helpful to actually put together a process in the Personnel Policy, on how to change items in the Personnel Policy. I think Carrie is just going by her experience and her knowledge, and, you know, the Department Ed Committee and the Finance Committee, we thought was a very appropriate approach, but if it has to be other committees, I'd love to document that as a process, so we can continue to use that, you know, as we review policies, and that just doesn't exist right now.
Okay.
What, what was the point of getting rid of the Review Board?
The Review Board? Well, again, just looking at efficiencies, and I wasn't clear whether or not the Review Board, I'm a little bit unclear on the committees about what exists and what's active and what isn't.
You're talking about the Employee Review Board?
Ban and grade.
Ban grade Review Board? Nobody wanted to serve on that, and it was a long tedious process. The Commissioners still are on that committee.
Are you talking ban and grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was one and the same, and when I referenced the ban and grade, since we utilize an outside source to do our banning and grading, from what I understood, it wasn't really functional, the Ban and Grade Committee. So again, just trying to get the, the policy to reflect what we're actually truly doing, and taking out language that maybe isn't needed anymore. So that was the thinking.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. So with regards, I brought forth a social media policy, do you want me to vet this the same way that we've been?
Let's do that, yeah.
Okay, so we'll skip that. I'm going to skip to the positions that you have in, I'm going to ask Steve to come up and join me here. And I'll, actually, there's two positions that have been through committee, through Finance Committee, and I know that prior to me coming on board, Pat had brought that forth as far as the Economic Development Specialist that is before you. And I'm going to request that the board formally approve that, I had asked for that to go through, for these two positions, whether or not the ban and grade position, both that position and the next one that I'll be referencing, were banded and graded with the need for that position. So if there's any specific questions about that position, but what I would be asking for from the board would be to go forth and approve that position, so that that can then be filled in the future, or advertised and filled in the future.
Any questions?
My question is, is this part-time EDA? Is that what this is, part-time EDA and part-time Parks and Rec? Is it refilling it? Because it doesn't state, there's no jobs, there's no verb in front of the saying, we're authorizing to go out to hire positions, what are we looking for?
Well, this is, this is a full-time position. The difference between the, the Economic Development Coordinator position and this position, which is Economic Development Specialist, it's the same grade, but when you look at the responsibilities, the focus is actually on economic development, and that's creating wealth. Jobs, new tax revenue, tourism, marketing, the things that go with that. The question was asked, well, I think, I think it was echoed by the department as well, is, is what about trails? Well, those are, if those are wealth creation opportunities and projects, this Economic Development position would be part of that. And I think what we're trying to, to put together is a position that, again, economic development is not statutorily required, but when done correctly, can create a lot of opportunities for local communities, cities, and for, for private business. And so our goal here is to create what is a best practice position of creating wealth in the county that we haven't had in, in previous positions. But it is a full-time position funded by the Economic Development Authority levy, the EDA levy.
This doesn't say what we have budgeted and what it would cost.
I, it's, it's already funded, but I understand that you guys probably want that on a position that's already funded, did we complete that at all, or?
We didn't, we spoke about that, but that wasn't.
Again, it's a position that's in the budget, already funded, same grade.
Wasn't the old position funded part by Parks and Rec?
It was all EDA funded, was it not? Yep, completely.
Had been at one time, I think, a little bit, but at, at the end, it hadn't been. It was all funded by the EDA.
Bring that additional information back on the twentieth.
Yeah.
So you want a cost analysis on that position, and the second one as well, to be, come before the board on the twentieth, is that what I'm hearing?
And, and show the budget, the revenue for it too.
Revenue, okay, so probably want me to be here. Alright.
I didn't understand on that second position, the, the organization relationship.
AMRF manager?
Yeah.
Let's bring that up.
On the material recovery operation, a facility manager, one and, one, two lines there, you mean?
Yeah.
I didn't understand it either.
Because you would think that the other line would go up to the other one, instead of, and then one of the titles is just copied into that second box. It's the exact same.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was looking at too.
I don't exactly understand what you were trying to do, make a lead worker over there, or what, what is this supposed to accomplish?
Two managers on site, one person's going to be in charge of recycling, coordination, collection, marketing, and things. You have a transfer station manager that's going to be taking care of the salvage side of things, they'll back up each other.
So you've got you, and then you've got Dean, and then you want to have another Dean, or somebody under him? But exclusive to recycling, is it?
Recycling.
Or they, they help each other?
Cross, they'll cross, because right now, Dean's got so many hours built up.
So this, this shouldn't say anything about Murph Manager or anything like that, because it's not a Murph Manager, it's, it's whatever Dean's title is, right?
Dean's title is Transfer Station Manager.
So wouldn't this be another Transfer Station Manager?
He would cross, he'll back up Dean, Dean's gone, but his, his primary job was. And the operations there.
So they'd both be working full-time together? I mean, they're both going to be out there getting paid, to do the same thing, basically.
No, no, they're doing different.
With that lower, I mean, because Dean's already getting.
Lower the responsibilities.
To do both. So I don't know how.
Dean never did really assume control over the managing, managing at that recycling facility, we don't have that, we never have.
So that reports directly to you?
They do, yes.
They're, they're banning gray at the same, weren't they?
They are, that's correct.
So they're pretty much equal, but back up each other.
Yeah, they're Bs, they're not Cs.
They're not Cs, they're basically a.
B three.
How would you be closer to what a supervisor, supervisor, highway department crew leader would be?
And they're different jobs, so there's, it's a specialty thing, and this Murph is going to be big.
They need to, they, Dean needs somebody.
He needs somebody, and he can't.
But you're saying that he's not doing that job anyway, Steve is doing it right now.
Right.
Between the two of us, we do get it done, but it, it is growing a lot, we've taken on a lot more operations, it's getting more complex, we invest more in machinery, we run more materials through there, there becomes a need to have more oversight. Basically, up until now, the crew leader that we have out there that works for the state is running more of the day-to-day operations and op- operations of the recycling facility, which we usually rely on him to do the maintenance of that machinery, coordinate things, so if he doesn't do any of that, it just doesn't happen, so there's gonna be a real gap on, on management over there.
Is the recycle, recycling fees, increase of recycling gonna pay for this?
Maybe not if the economy goes down a grapper.
Well, maybe, maybe not, is the current situation, does it look like it would cash flow without impacting the tipping fees?
Well, yeah, this, this is carrying, so.
No, we didn't, we increased the tip fees very little.
Right, that's fair.
Um, yeah, I don't even remember what it was, but it was very little, but this is now a lev- there's no effect to the levy here, it's, it's
Well, of course.
Effect to the budget.
It's effect to the tipping fees, if, if.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
So it, where do you see the tipping fees going with, with addition to this? I mean, obviously, there's gonna be more revenue because they will generate more revenue because of efficiencies and hopefully better.
Yeah, less, less, uh, expenses from repairs, maintenance, that type of thing. So, I think, I think you'll see that path. I mean, can you definitely say that, you know, next year, repair costs will dominate all, but you have somebody that's more schooled on it, that's watching that and setting up the programs, obviously makes sense, that's why we hire people for maintenance. As far as coordinating and scheduling, absolutely.
Didn't we make lead workers out there?
We never have, it's been, it's been, I'll tell you, I've been on that committee for probably all of my time here, and that has been the tightest-held committee, I think, for employees, dude, that I sit on.
Does it need to be a manager position, can it be under Dean and, and give?
No, we talked all about that, but Dean is gonna be, Dean's got another year.
Assistant manager, I mean.
Uh-huh, he just doesn't have much time.
But there's a lot of expensive equipment, what did that screener cost us that wasn't adjusted right, or what that, remember the machine that we just fixed?
Was it Eddie Cramp?
Yes.
Used to replace the drums about forty grand.
Because it was out of adjustment. And so what, there's a lot, and we're buying more expensive equipment. I can't imagine being in business and not having, and start a new business somewhere and put a bunch of equipment in there, not having somebody know what was going on, to where it doesn't cost us forty grand, cause that one was just out of adjustment. We just paid that, how long ago was that? Couple, it was this summer. And so when you have this much specialized stuff, Dean can't watch that, it needs somebody to take care of it, either that or we shouldn't have it, but you can't buy all this stuff if, if we don't have somebody to, to watch it, and we don't.
What I'm saying is if, if that person has the title of manager, assistant manager, or assistant supervisor, doesn't make them any better or worse monitoring that equipment.
No, but we want a good guy over there, and so if you're gonna, if you're gonna put somebody over there and not pay him, now we might as well go with what we got and let him keep wrecking stuff, but we need a good, we need a good guy over there.
Gonna be required to have a class A license, I mean, it's a B position, there's no doubt about it, what you put the title on him, it's still a B position. And the other side of it is, is that there's two part-time employees that you're not gonna recover, so the budget, it, it is not a full-time salary that we're gonna cover here, it's gonna be not a lot, actually.
Well, it's good to know we don't have any of that information, so. Should've been good to see it.
The other thing is, if you, he'll be a manager, so he's gonna be the one doing performance evaluations, right now Dean's got thirteen people, something like that, so you're, you're spreading some of that out too and creating some redundancy over it, so you'd split some of that out, some of that load out, personnel management standpoint, which would be a good thing.
Knew that was gonna happen. Shot over there. Um, you go out there on any, in, any given day and, and Dean is sitting in a, a front-end loader, running some equipment, he just can't do this, can't handle.
That's where you wanna be.
That's where I'd wanna be too.
But that is, I mean, some days I like to just go mowing lawn, this is, this is so mundane, it's nice mowing lawn, don't leave your phone in the house, mowing lawn, that's it.
I'm just saying, they need some help out there.
I wanna go mow lawn.
I'm going to. Sure. Alright, so what do we need?
Well, I think this discussion is so helpful in your position, I mean, it it's just, you just need these discussions. That's, and if you wanna bring it back, or if you wanna bring back with that, that information, it's nice to hear that, Larry, I don't know, you said you're, you're not replacing two part-times?
Right, that's, that's the plan. I think, wasn't it two part-time?
Oh, we got two part-time out, out there right now that are working in operations and, and, yeah, one, Edzel's retired, moved out. Obviously, it's gonna take a little bit of time to go from bringing somebody on, some time, and get them acclimated to this, and then I foresee some of those part-time ones that are gonna be leaving, and then we would know if we should backfill it or not.
You have an opening now? Thought there was some opening right now, a part-time position open.
We have the two Lucasons out there, and that's it.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah.
Larry. How long have we been working on this, since I became a commissioner?
Oh, long before that.
Well, that's what I mean, but that's how long we've been trying to get
This is, I'm the wrong guy to be on that committee.
Yeah, but that's how long we've been trying to get somebody, and that's how much.
They should've had help along.
Yeah, they should, he really should've.
So what do you need from us, that's the question.
You guys gone through, uh, environment and finance, what, what is the board's?
You want a motion to hire the guy?
You've got an agenda here, so what, we'd like to know what the board's pleasure is.
I make a motion to hire.
Fill that position?
Yes.
Yeah, motion by Richard.
Second.
Second by John. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Hold.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I don't recall.
Okay, Barry?
Nay.
Ben?
Nay.
John?
Yeah.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Again, a couple, I'm not sold on a posit- a real strong one way or other, but, I mean, even on our agenda, it doesn't say anything about hiring anyone.
Well, we need to do it, you know.
I'm not saying we, I'm not arguing whether we need to or not.
Then how much more work you wanna do here?
Why doesn't it say?
What do you got working on your tractors, who works on your tractors?
It says, you know what it says on our agenda? Positions.
Well, okay, now we've had the discussion though, so really, do you think we don't, how much further down the road do you wanna kick this, it's been?
Why don't we follow our agenda and put appropriate titles on what we need to do?
Well, if we followed the agenda all the time, there's a lot of stuff that wouldn't happen.
No, it's not.
Well, no, I, we don't wanna get into that right now.
Go ahead, you want me to bring some stuff up?
Well, we can, I, we sure can, Barry, I don't have a problem with it.
Alright, we have a, we have, it's settled, go ahead, continue.
Um, the last thing I had on my, um, which should be included in your, um, in your information as well, is I had presented this prior to the board with regards to leadership training, um, it was suggested that I also, um, you know, look, uh, locally for other trainers that potentially could, um, do the training for our department hands as well as lead workers and our supervisors, so I have included that in your packet. Um, it, the cost was significantly lower if we were to go through the, um, tech school or the college here locally, um, I had an opportunity to meet with them last week, and the specific trainer that would be doing the trainer, got the, excuse me, the training and the modules, which, again, it should be included, um, and the cost was about half of the price that I originally had, uh, brought forth through committee, uh, when I was working with our EAP group. So, um, again, I took this through finance, so my request of the board today, um, due to the cost, um, would be requesting a motion for, um, this to be, to go forth with, um, this training, um, it would probably tentatively begin in February, um, monthly, or monthly, between monthly and five weeks in between each session.
Which is the board?
I think we need to move forward on it.
That motion, John?
Yes.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you, um, the last update that I have for the board, um, is, again, just updating, we are continuing on our, um, training, um, with human resources as well as payroll going forth with, uh, UKG programs and implementing that, so the training's been ongoing, um, with target date of hopefully implementing the new system within the county towards the end of March, beginning of April, so.
Good.
It's ongoing, lots of training, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Morning.
Morning.
I have, uh, four different items to do, to bring forward to the board today, first one is, uh, demoing a tax forfeit house in, uh, Frazee, went out for an RFP, uh, to demo it, and low bid was to Boite excavating for seventeen thousand five hundred, I believe it was, and just need a board motion allowing us to enter into a contract to demo the house.
I make a motion to demolish the house.
Motion by Richard?
Second.
Second by Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you, second item is a two thousand twenty-four ceiling contract, we've got one quote from same people that we've always got from in the past, um,
PRT.
We can put a board motion to approve the purchase of the ceilings.
Quite a bit higher.
He's doing so.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Uh, the, the next item is a request to, so we're gonna, planning on possibly starting to send our solid waste to the Polk County landfill near Crookston. Bargill has notified us that they do not want our garbage, uh, going into the future, they're running out of capacity themselves, and so they've given us through two thousand twenty-three, and then, and then twenty, two thousand twenty-four, I just got a notification, they're gonna increase our tip fees twenty-five dollars a ton in addition to, for twenty-three, we got a five-dollar increase per ton, so it's, they're, they're making a financial incentive for us to go elsewhere. Uh, we did earlier reach out to the other regional landfills to see what their tipping fees were and look at their transportation costs, they're almost all identical, by the time you move it to either Gwener, uh, Grand Forks, or to Crookston, uh, when you consider the tip fee plus transportation is just within a dollar per ton. Uh, Polk County, they're going through an expansion right now, and they're working with the feds and the state and the local watershed, they got some issues that they're working through, and they wanted a certificate of need from Becker County saying this is what our capacities we bring to them, I've already sent them that, that amount. They would like is a letter from the Becker County Board stating that that is what our intent is, is the volumes, and that letter is in your packet, and that's what this just says, is this is what our intent is, this isn't committing us to anything, but it is saying that we're seriously considering sending waste to, uh, Polk County landfill.
So you're looking for a motion to?
Just a motion allowing the board chair and get the administrator on there to sign it and send the letter.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Richard?
Second.
Thank you.
By Barry? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Uh, the next agenda item, uh, Revolution Plastics, they're a company that recycles egg plastic, oh, two, three years ago, they got, came into the county and they spread these dumpsters on different farms, and it never worked out, and then we worked out a deal between the producers, or the farmers, the county, and Revolution Plastics, where we do the collection, the, the farmers would pay for the cost to collect it, bale it, and we put it on Revolution's trucks. This last year, Revolution Plastics, in the past, we'd been homingling different types of plastic film, and they made us quit doing that, so now it's basically a heavier film that you see that goes over silage piles, that's the only type of plastic that they, they won't take the bail rap, and, uh, that's about half of our volume. And recently, uh, some counties in Minnesota have been starting to pull out of this program, and, uh, we reached out to them and asked them if they'd be interested in selling their dumpsters, uh, replacement dumpster, by the time you get it here in Becker County's gonna be eighteen hundred bucks probably, at ballpark, and they said they'd be willing to sell those dumpsters to us, that they have located here on the county for four hundred dollars per dumpster, and that, that'd be my request, is that we purchase this, and then, yeah, we buy this, and I think Otter Tail and, uh, Wedena and Todd are possibly gonna do the same thing, and then we'd look at it regionally, and then we'd control the product, so there's other vendors that will buy that type of plastic, right now, we're committed to sending it to them because it's their dumpsters, by, by, buying these dumpsters. We would continue collecting and sending it to them, but it really would open it up so that we could start, uh, putting this on the open market.
And if you all are aware that occasionally we're buying dumpsters all the time, so it's, it's a, it's a sweet, knowing the dumpsters.
It is, it's a good deal for, for the dumpsters, we did ask them if they'd be interested in selling us dumpsters from other counties, and they said it'd be for, for the same price, but we'd have to go through and pick them up and probably empty them and fix them, and, you know, that's, so I will hold up on that for now, I'm being that word.
Mr. Chair, I think it's a good idea to buy the dumpsters, let's just not build a building to store the plastic in, I mean.
Oh, for sure.
Is that a motion?
I think you know what, sure.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard, any discussion?
I agree.
All those in favor signify. Hang on.
Aye.
You gotta keep the economy going, Ben, then the plastic will go.
It, it passed, motion carried.
Any questions, anything?
I don't have any engineers on one.
Oh, okay, alright.
Mr. Chair, why don't we do, uh, share if there's a, um, there's a ceremonial, if I would imagine.
Are they here?
Are there people here?
Didn't realize we were getting so far to the green, but that's not a lot of.
I have one purchase request, which is drones, which is in your packet. This was, uh, mentioned at the last meeting, it's part of the, uh, ARPA request. We're looking at four drones for each supervisor squad, and then one main drone they have at the office, so it's a bigger drone. As far as the specifics, Shane can answer those questions, I'm not a drone tech person. The grand total cost would be eighteen thousand four hundred and ten ninety-nine.
Eighteen thousand just for the large drone?
That was for the large.
That's true.
Yeah, we're, I thought we were just doing the four.
Well, and I was hoping, um, Chair, if you'd been aligned, the chief deputy was there, but Finance Committee, he had talked about priority and, uh, I don't know if he updated you on that, you guys have that discussion, what's important?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're all important in, in my book, but, uh, um, if, if we only have to go down to the four, that's what I'm requesting.
What does the large one do for you?
You wanna answer that?
Yeah, so the large one, um, it, it's a more robust drone, so it, it, it'll sustain higher winds and stuff, uh, the smaller drones that we have have a lower wind threshold, so if, you know, you got a thirty-five mile an hour wind, we're, um, that's probably gonna be at the limit or exceeding the limit of the smaller drones, uh, the larger drone, would be able to withstand that, it's got some more, it's got some better weatherproofing, so we could actually fly it in a rainstorm. If we're doing a long sustained flight, it's, it's just a larger platform to operate from, uh, the smaller ones are good drones, they, you know, they're more of a quick response out in field, that we can get those drones in the sky a lot quicker than, um, you know, the bigger drones, um, the bigger drone would probably sit back in the office, that if we had a major event, somebody would come and get it, but the smaller drones are, are kind of a quick deployment when issues arise. Um, one of the things, the, they just came out with, the smaller ones, uh, are the newer drones, they're, the technology is advancing very quickly, and the thermal, and the cameras, and the imaging on these is really becoming quite a bit better for, uh, like actually locating people for search and rescue type stuff. Uh, there's some other obstacle avoidance, uh, stuff that it'll actually sense when stuff's around, so you can't fly it into a wall or a tree or something like that, um, the, the new smaller drones have got a forty-five minute flight time, where the old ones are only thirty minutes, so it gives us more sustained flights, so if you're searching for somebody, it gives you more time in the air, um, and then again, the, the range is better on them, uh, they're, they're just, they're a lot faster to deploy to, um, our big drone that we've currently got, um, is an older model, we We recently had the Maple Log Fire and WCCO was up to shoot some drone footage. And I'd been flying for the fire department and the fire marshal's office, they wanted some footage for their investigation and stuff. And I had set the drone down and they asked me if they could fly. I said, yep, I'm all done flying. You're, you're welcome to. They popped their drone out, put it up in the air, flew it around, took all their video and everything, set it back down and put it away. I was still taking our drone apart, trying to put it back in the box, just because that older drone, it's, there's parts that you, you have to assemble the thing and it just, it's, you know. From a public safety standpoint, it's not a, put it up in the air. So I mean, there's some, there's some advances there that really would be beneficial for us, but.
Mr. Chair, how many drones does the department have right now?
Two working drones. One's an extremely old drone that's just, it doesn't work well. It's the, one of the benefits of these newer drones is the, the connection between the controller and the drone. You can actually watch now and see good, high-quality video while you're searching. That old drone, you almost had to fly it. It was good enough that you could fly to see where you were going, but you couldn't really search. It was digitized and chunky and didn't have the quality. So you'd have to come back, pull the card out, put it in a computer and watch what you've just flown. That one, if we use it for anything, it's just kind of a trainer to get people going on. We're not worried about crashing it. It's a low-quality drone that we, but, I mean, five years ago, it was what was out there. The other one that we purchased two years ago, I think it was, was the M two-ten. That's a, that's a big drone that's got the FLIR and the thirty-time zoom on it. And it's still a platform that, I mean, we can use. It's, it's, it still does well. It's, it's just the, the image quality isn't there, the, and then again, the setup and teardown time. It's, it's kind of a lengthy process to get that one in the air, so.
You mentioned the bigger one would only be used, it wouldn't be used on the fly anyway.
It wouldn't. It wouldn't, but it's, uh, there's, and I, I could do a demo. I mean, if, if something we wanna talk about later on, just to kind of show, I mean, the differences between the two and what, what, what the new ones offer, so.
Did you wanna, the big one too, or?
Well, we kinda, kinda agreed to probably go with the four small ones.
Is the large one something that you can share county to county? I mean, that, of a joint?
It would be owned by us, but yeah, we're, I mean, the, the cooperative relationships that we have with our surrounding county.
But you know, every county doesn't need, need one of those, I wouldn't think, if you can.
Well, I don't know. It is not a bad idea if they get the big one too. I hate to tell you that. Well, if there's some, if there's a little kid missing or something and it's too windy or, I don't care what it is, that ain't that much money when you're talking to saving a life.
I'd like, like it to be, I don't think every county needs one. I mean, so someone can start running it down to far from Morehead or Fergus Falls if we, if we can share one for multi-county area. In my opinion, that would be, you don't need that on an everyday, I mean, that's a once a year.
Yeah, but if you need it, how soon do you need it? You know what I mean? That's my question, I guess. If we have it, we can take it and grab it and go. And if we have to go borrow it for somebody and there's, and we're searching for somebody.
We're the first one that buys it, then it'll be here and we can share.
Well, and that, that would be up to him if he wanted one or whatever, or he'd let somebody else use it. I would, I would wanna help.
We just had a missing person who was in, who was in the city.
Yeah.
But we, we do have missing person reports several year. Adult, child, and obviously for criminal reasons as well. So there would be a benefit.
One of the things too, when we talked about the drones initially, and we haven't talked with the other departments, but I did fly when Dan McLaughlin was here. He wanted to look at some winterkill on some oak trees. And he was looking at a hundred and eighty acre piece, I think it was. And he, so we went up there and he's not here anymore, but it's something that we've done in the past for him was he was able to, when we, when we flew it over, I provided him with that video. And he was able to do an assessment of how much winterkill was on that oak and stuff. I know a lot of county highways and stuff like that are using it for like bridge inspections, different things like that where, you know, we're, anything that we can fly on as a training mission for us, stick time is great. You know, just to see some of the different ways that we can use it. In fact, the State Patrol just did a presentation with the West Central EMS. Two months ago, I think it was, talking about some of the capabilities that they have. They've got a little different drones with their LiDAR and, or with their, not lighter, but their software for doing accident recon and stuff. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of situations out there where, you know, countywide may be beneficial to some of the other departments that we're more than willing to go and help on. We haven't had that request, but, I mean, for those of you that are on different committees, if there's stuff that it can be beneficial on, we're more than happy to do those things.
I think, you know, discuss a share if we could goodbye to four, but we want a full more discussion.
That's kind of what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the FLIR is, the FLIR capabilities, but really for the search and rescue side for us is incredible. So we did a training with Lake Park Fire with that big drone. And we found the missing hunter that we were looking for. That the scenario was a, he had had a heart attack in a tree stand. We found him in two or three minutes and it, we would have been there all night searching for him. I mean, it was that fast. Luckily, there was no leaves on the trees and, you know, he was, he had just gotten climbed up in the trees. I mean, he, he stuck out pretty well, but I mean, if they're there for a while, we had that missing hunter up.
Couple of years ago.
On one thirteen. Yep. And we couldn't fly in that one because of the weather. There was moisture in the air and the drone that we had at that time, we couldn't fly. We'd have found him a lot quicker too, so.
Mr. Chair.
Pretty incredible technology.
I think buying four brand new ones is a pretty big improvement. It sounds like the technology is improving so fast. This one that you had from two years ago, it's improved so much that it'd probably be prudent to stagger the purchases anyway.
That's kind of what I was.
You know, that way you've got the most updated thing.
Yeah.
And these, these four just came out a month ago. So this is like the newest version. They actually dropped in price, which was good from the last one. So they dropped about nine hundred bucks from the previous version. And this is, this is gonna be the best technology available right now on those four smaller ones.
Nice. Then maybe next year, then you get to a point where you're buying one a year and you've got an updated drone, you know, for your department every single year.
True.
Rather than buy five all at once.
Yeah.
And do we know what the severity of the weather is that checks the non-use of the smaller ones? I mean, what, do we know that?
They are, so the, the, the big one is waterproof. I mean, they say you can fly it in rain. The smaller ones are weather resistant. They, they don't really, they, they, they aren't set to that level. So I mean, the problem is that, like, the motors and stuff, the electric motors for the, for the propellers, if they get moist, uh, moisture in them, they're gonna stop working is the issue and they come out of the sky in a hurry, so.
Not good.
No, not good at all.
That's not good when you're paying seven thousand dollars.
What are you gonna see though in the rain if you're not?
Are they thermal? Is that what they are?
Both thermal and optical, yes.
Well, then you'd see real well in the rain.
And the new ones too, you can actually overlay the thermal and the optical, which is very nice when you're searching, so.
This is the board?
I'm fine with either way, going with them, going with them all at this time and.
I guess the movement, I'll make a motion to purchase the four.
All right. Have a motion by John.
Later.
Second.
Second by Ben. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Hearing down motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, I have, I wanna introduce our newest deputy. He's been with us for a few weeks now, but I can tell you that being in the position that we are here in Becker County is, we're very fortunate. We had five new deputies start this year replacements. And I can tell you that not all sheriff's offices are in the position we are. Where we have people wanting to work here in Becker County. And sitting next to me now is Deputy Josh Beery. And before we go any further, I'm gonna have him introduce himself and where he's from. And go ahead, give the floor.
I'm Josh Beery. From St. Cloud. Started my law enforcement degree at SCSU and finished it at Alexandria Tech. So, I mean, wanted to move up here. I like the area up here, so, and I hunt over in Nevis, so.
You can hunt Becker County too.
I can.
The drones come in handy, huh?
So at this point, I'm gonna do a ceremonial oath with Josh and go from here. Right here. Use your right hand. Keep it after me. I Joshua Christopher Beery.
I Joshua Christopher.
Do hereby swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. And impartially discharge. The duties of the office. Of Deputy Sheriff. Of Becker County, Minnesota. To which I've been duly appointed. And now we will have. His better half in his badge on. Hope you can introduce yourself to the guests.
I'm Gabby.
Hey Gabby.
Josh? Oh, sure. Congrat, congratulations. Good grip there. Got to stand in front.
You gotta get on the step.
See, I talked this way, jump in. Right, thank you.
Last agenda item is, uh, I know most of you know, I think all of you know, Investigator Kathy Nguyen. So the Minnesota Sheriff's Association has different awards that they give out yearly. And one of those awards is the Deputy Sheriff of the Year. If you remember, two years ago, we had three deputies get the Medal of Valor and then also the Support Staff of the Year, which was Cindy Sealing. And I am honored to be able to present this to Kathy. And she was presented this last weekend at the Sheriff's Association Conference. But again, to, to be in my position and having these people in our, in my office here in, in our county is pretty amazing. We are very fortunate. And I'm gonna read what the nomination letter was. Her entire career has been based in Becker County. The Becker County Sheriff's Office has been fortunate to have this twenty-six-year veteran on staff. Kathy Nguyen started as a corrections officer with the Becker County Sheriff's Office in nineteen ninety-six. In nineteen ninety-nine, she became a Deputy Sheriff under Tom Hunt. Along with being a patrol deputy, she served as the department's crime prevention officer and use of force instructor. Kathy was promoted to investigator in two thousand and four. Now the senior investigator at the sheriff's office, Kathy still shows that passion for law enforcement. During her career as an investigator, Kathy has investigated over three hundred child sex and pornographic crimes, along with working several high-profile cases. Investigator Nguyen is the go-to officer for fellow officers when it comes to the investigation of child sex crimes. Kathy's priority is to use a victim-focused approach when interviewing the victim. Another priority is sensitivity, understanding, and believing to build trust with the victim and their family. Kathy excels at keeping those involved informed of the case progress. Kathy stated recently, at this point in their experience, I can't change what has happened, but I can do my best to bring them closure and justice to the survivor and/or their family. When thinking about past cases, Kathy remembered a female juvenile reporting a rape, surely thereafter recanting it. This sequence happened a few times. Kathy had a feeling something was not right and decided to visit the child. Their plan was a success. The female child called the abuser with Kathy by her side, recording the conversation. The abuser admitted everything and justice was later served. Investigator Nguyen has a passion for working with children, senior citizens, the sexual assault response teams in Becker County and White Earth. She is an integral, integral part of the elder abuse multidisciplinary team and recently became involved with the county's Triad Program, which is a partnership of law enforcement, senior citizens, and community groups. She continues to be involved with crime prevention projects, including being active with the sheriff's office information booth each year at the fair. Each day she arrives on duty with public safety at the forefront. As described by a sergeant, she has an I can and an I will attitude. And I can second that. Kathy handles each call with professionalism and dignity, no matter how big or small the call is. Investigator Nguyen's knowledge in negotiation skills for keeping people safe, knowledge of the laws, patience, and the ability to remain, to remain calm in stressful situations plays a vital role in all calls for the service of Becker County. She is a true leader in all aspects and a mentor for fellow officers. Without hesitation, she remains dedicated to serving the citizens of Becker County, and we are thrilled to show our appreciation for her hard work. Kathy, we are, we are inspired by your passion and thank you for your constant hard work in keeping our public safe. Signed by me. And it is an honor to present this award to Deputy Sheriff, Deputy Investigator Kathy Nguyen.
There's gotta be a mistake on the, on your letter though, because she can't be over thirty-five. Congratulations.
Thanks Larry.
Congratulations. Twenty-six years. Well, we only, let's get highway down here. Yeah, you wanna take a break? Okay, let's take a break. Yeah, you want to take a break? Okay, let's take a break. I didn't either.
There's also, she was.
Up at three.